And welcome. If everybody could please take a seat. And we'll start our meeting by my watch at four o'clock. We should get going. So welcome to the, pardon me, the second annual Eastwood Hall Town Hall meeting. And I want to thank you all for coming. Actually, I'm surprised that there's anybody here other than the presenters, given how nice a day it is. So thank you for giving up your time on the golf course and elsewhere to attend this meeting. In terms of thanks, I also want to thank the incredible number and quality of people that really make this place what it is. We have about 150 volunteers that serve as officers on committees, chair people and so forth. And we have a staff of about 115 at our peak and about 20 some odd during the winter. So our senior managers are very busy every year, hiring and recruiting and bringing new people onboard. It's a formidable task and they're really to be commended for it. So if we go on to the meeting objectives, there's really only one objective for this meeting, and that is communication. We're not going to vote on anything. The voting will be left in the annual meeting. But I'd like to make the communication as informal and as productive as humanly possible. So in terms of that, during the meeting, I have my laser pointer here. The rest of the presenters are very excited about using it. It's leftover from when I used to work for a living. So with questions, feel free to ask questions during presentations. At the end, you can ask them verbally, or you can write them down and pass them to Chloe or John or somebody that will be circulating around. When you have a question, somebody probably, Chloe, will have a microphone and they'll hand it to you so you can speak in a normal voice but a way in which we can all hear you. If we look at the meeting agenda, we've already taken one quarter of the whole meeting up now with the welcome and objectives. Just kidding, that was a joke. After that, John Defoe, our new and illustrious general manager, will talk about club operations. And then we'll move on to the plans for this year. I'll mention a few of the major board initiatives and some of the club, of the committee chair people will talk about what's going on and their piece of the world. We'll leave a little time for discussion at the end. But as I said, feel free to ask questions during the talks, at the end of a talk, written or whatever you feel comfortable. So with that, let me turn it over to John. And please, my pointer here.
Thank you. I may need that. Yeah. You can disregard what Eric said about asking questions. That's quite all right if you don't ask questions during my report. Keep that group alive. But good afternoon and thank you all for coming today. I appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief update on our club operations so far this season, and more so for the confidence that the board and membership have shown by promoting me to general manager. It's fair to say that 2019 has gotten off to a relatively modest but generally positive start. As you will see in the following slides, some of our operating results are slightly behind last year, but in general, we are tracking to plan. As you will hear from your treasurer in a few minutes, our 2018 operating results were some of the best the club has ever seen and will obviously be a challenge to replicate. Please note that as I go through the next few slides, in an attempt to give you a snapshot of where we stand so far this year, you'll see that some of the results shown are through April 30th. This is because our accounting department is still in the process of closing May. I expect due to the fact that the piles of cash generated by last month's activity are just taking a while to count. Okay, next slide, please. That was a joke. Now, through April 30th, our operating income is slightly ahead of plan, and that's primarily due to expense savings. Nothing remarkable to report here, mainly just the normal ramp-up activity. Our volume and activity is so sort of limited this time as we get the year started, little number changes can make a big difference. However, on the next slide, you'll see that in terms of revenue by source, dues and other income are currently better than budget, which is largely driven by finance charges. Not that we've charged a whole ton of finance charges, but that is one area where we don't necessarily budget a large sum, and we did see that there was some of that activity over the course of the first quarter. Let's see. Again, golf and food and beverage revenue, as you can see, had a slightly sluggish start to the year. This result is likely attributable to the less-than-spectacular weather that we experienced as the season got underway. That is evidenced by both the number of golf rounds and restaurant covers, which were both below last year. Next slide, please. Expense-wise, positive budget variances were observed in golf course and pro-shop operations, while restaurant clubhouse expense saw a slightly adverse result. In general terms, most of these early-season variances are due to the timing of monthly budget spreads, the limited activity, and are related to factors involving routine ramp-up activities by our operating departments. These variances are expected to level off as the season progresses. Next slide. With regard to initiation income through May, we have welcomed aboard six new certificate members and five new house members. Based on the ongoing work of the membership committee, we expect to end the year with a positive budget variance in this area. We originally budgeted 954, I believe, thousand in initiation fees, and we will be higher than that based on openings that the membership committee is working to fill now. In terms of reserve fund activity through April, our reserve balances are healthy as they typically are this time of year. As our treasurer reminded me earlier, they are generally at their highest point as we start the year. Ongoing capital investment and debt reduction is being managed according to plan. Through April, we have expensed $320,000 on the shoreline project against the approved budget of 1.2 million. Actually, the approved budget was 1.4 million. We've adjusted that based on some discussions with our vendors and contractors, and we are comfortable with that budget number. I'll provide more information on the revetment project in just a few minutes. Shifting over to our golf operations, again here, not much activity to report through May. Overall rounds have been below last year's actuals each month so far this year, and at this point in time, we are approximately 7% behind last year. Once again, Mother Nature deserves the lion's share of credit for this result. Within that total, walking rounds have dropped very slightly from 38 to 35% of our total rounds, but with the bulk of our golf days ahead of us, this statistic is unremarkable. As we look at rounds of golf by membership category, the result is, again, fairly predictable. Almost half of all rounds played to date have been by certificate members, and fewer than half of that number were by house members, whose privilege for golf goes from September 15th through June 15th annually. Let's see. Excuse me. Non-member reciprocals, juniors, and seniors respectively round out the total rounds with between 16 and 9%. As our members continue to return to the Cape, we can expect that the category golfing trends over the next few months to come will relate closely to prior years. Onto the golf course itself, I'm pleased to report that the overall health of the course, greens, tees, and fairways, is excellent and disease-free. Our greens crew has built a new forward tee on number 11, which has been the source of universally favorable feedback. Several car paths have been extended and enhanced by the addition of new material, which is being watered down as often as possible in an effort to mitigate the dust. Our native areas have been and will continue to be treated for weeds, woody plants, ticks, and damaging insects. Obvious to most of you who have played the course is the removal of numerous dead, damaged, and unsightly trees, most notably in the areas between 11 and 17, between 12 and 13, and between 16 and 17. Finally, after the end of last year's golf season, the greens crew renovated the green and white tees on number 17 as well as the driving range tee, thereby completing a three-year in-house project to renovate all of our tees on the golf course, if I'm not mistaken. And that involved re-leveling, realigning, and re-grassing each of those tees. As mentioned earlier, 2019 activity has started slow across the board but is beginning to pick up. Correlating to the low golf rounds, covers in our restaurant were below last year as well. While the low numbers tend to amplify a percentage-based analysis, a difference in just a few hundred meals served this year could result from just one or two fewer private parties than last year. Our book of private party business for this year is substantially lower than in 2018, and accordingly, we are projecting a lower number of total covers. If you would like to plan a party, we have plenty of people on staff who would be thrilled to talk to you about booking one of those. This reduction in covers year over year can also be seen in the restaurant revenue, again, projected to be short of last year's record-breaking result. Our restaurant is budgeted annually to achieve a net bottom line loss of $100,000 or better. This target is based on the fact that in order to accommodate our members by being open even on a limited basis during the shoulder seasons, we generally book a loss in the restaurant every month of operations with the exception of June, July, August, and September. This is typical for a lot of seasonal clubs. In a good year, we carry a profit from the summer months into October, and in a great year, our summer profits carry us into November. The fact that we ended 2018 with a better-than-$60,000 profit in the restaurant is a testament to the value of those approved member-hosted and member-sponsored private parties. Next, with regard to staffing, it should come to no surprise that attracting, recruiting, and retaining a qualified staff of employees to execute the operations of a highly seasonal business during one of the most, during a period when unemployment is at historically low levels and the cost of living in our area gets higher every year, is one of the most critical strategic challenges for our club and will continue to be so for the foreseeable future. As you may have heard or read in my most recent current article, each year, our employee headcount increases almost fivefold from a full-time year-round staff of 25 to a high season census of around 115. In a typical year, approximately 35 to 40% of those 80 or so seasonal employees are in their first season of employment here at the club. Obviously, that requires a strong emphasis on training, orientation, and onboarding, and all of our operational and senior staff are deeply involved in that process throughout the season. Falling back on my culinary background, I often use the metaphor of making a pot of soup when trying to explain the situation. Since our season is so short and concentrated, and we are bringing our seasonal staff on in waves during the weeks leading up to high season, May and June are when we are adding all of the ingredients to the pot, adjusting the seasonings and temperature, i.e. training, to achieve the correct flavor and consistency. By the time mid-June rolls around and our member activity is rapidly approaching its sustained two-to-three-month plateau, the soup reaches a boiling point, and we are locked into those ingredients and flavors. The cooks in the audience know that there's a point in the process where you're locked in, and that's kind of what it's like here. We are fortunate to have established relationships with a number of colleges, professional organizations, alternate season private clubs, which help us to identify quality interns and aspiring golf or hospitality professionals who are willing to spend a summer or two in Chatham. These seasonal hires bring enthusiasm and fresh ideas for process improvement, which benefits all of us. We are also fortunate to have a strong presence of tenured local frontline staff, many with decades of experience at Eastwood Ho, who are instrumental in getting the new folks up to speed quickly with regard to our club's standards and expectations. Folks like Sean Caswell and Howard Tansey in our greens department, Brian Chase in our kitchen, Kathy and Kristen Gallagher, Tina Wagner, Ed DeZallo, Kathy Jones in the restaurant, and Brendan Pickett in our building maintenance department, those nine people alone combined represent nearly 200 years of service to this club, and we are incredibly fortunate to have them. Moving on to the coastline, protecting Eastwood Ho's 1.3 miles of northeast-facing Atlantic shoreline has been a major priority of club leadership for many, many decades. In 2019, I am pleased to report that upon completion of our most recently approved revetment project, which will occur in the fall, nearly 80% of our entire shoreline and 100% of our fragile coastal embankments will be fortified. The impact of Mother Nature on our property cannot be underestimated, as evidenced by the erosion shown in this slide, which until recent years could be observed up and down the length of our shoreline. Thanks to the diligence and commitment of our Coastal Erosion Committee, most notably Jack Farrell, the club is now exceptionally postured to weather the storms ahead for many years to come. The project, which was approved by the membership last year, was just one component of a comprehensive shoreline management plan that has been actively underway for many years. We continue to work closely with the Chatham Conservation Commission and other regulatory agencies, and we should all take pride in the club's responsible stewardship of this spectacular piece of land. I would like to take just a few moments to remind everyone of the powerful value of our club website. Eric mentioned communication, and that should always be a main focus of the club's administration. The website is the single most comprehensive source of information and interaction available to our members, and I would strongly encourage everyone to access it as regularly as possible. Summarizing the number of usable and convenient elements of the site could fill an entire town hall meeting, so I would like to mention just a few key highlights today. What I believe may be one of the greatest new additions to the site arose out of a simple member suggestion. Like many folks, this particular member did not spend an abundance of time in Chatham during the season and thus didn't really have the access to a regular group with whom to play. Based on his work schedule, his time at the club was sometimes random, sporadic, and unpredictable. That made it difficult for him to meet and interact with other members. Based on that member's suggestion, we have set up a player matchup bulletin board feature on the website to facilitate member-to-member connections for the purpose of finding a game. I apologize for stealing one of our golf committee chairs' points for this. The way the feature works is simply by logging onto the site, selecting the quick link on the homepage, and posting or replying to the bulletin board. We have tried to make this feature even more convenient by inviting members to opt-in to an email notification every time an entry is made on the board. For example, if I have opted into this service, anytime someone looking to put together a group on, say, or round out a group, I guess, on a particular Saturday afternoon, I'll get an email that shows me that member's contact information so that I may respond directly to him or her. It's truly that simple. Another quick link on the homepage gives every member 24-hour, seven-a-day opportunity to provide feedback and input on any element of club operations, from the dining offerings to clubhouse and facilities to the golf course or the pro-shop operations. When you click on comments and suggestions on the homepage, you may choose from four different very brief surveys and enter your rating evaluations and comments. When you hit send, that feedback will automatically be routed to the relevant club committee or operational manager, and survey results, comments, and responses will be shared regularly with the Board of Governors. One goal of the board is to continuously improve the way we communicate with our members. To this end, you have the ability to view every formal communication sent out by the board or committees over the past two-year period by simply clicking on the communications link under My Club, under the My Club heading on the homepage. As you can see, that's just a partial list. There's probably about 20 different documents that are listed on there that are things that are, you know, sent out by the club either as a major email or a snail mail. So, next slide, please. I'd like to continue now by reminding everyone that Eastwood Ho will be celebrating our 100th anniversary on July 3rd, 2022. A committee comprised of Peter Tarrant, Georgia Purse, Bonnie Rosenthal, Bill Healy, Randy Van Sickle, Kerry Brown, and our good friend Jim Blankenship, who sadly passed away earlier this year, have already been busy for a number of years planning for this amazing milestone in the club's history. To date, the committee has combed through boxes upon boxes of archival documents, pictures, and records dating back to the very first days of the club. Their research has included outreach to members old and new as well as the greater community at large. They have even developed a special page on the club website that features, among other things, an oral history series filmed by Bonnie Rosenthal that is chock-full of amazing and entertaining stories from past and present members and staff, giving life to the story of Eastwood Ho. The committee has also selected one of the foremost golf authors in the country, James Dodson, and Legendary Publishing, widely regarded as the best club history book producer in the industry, to pen our centennial story. That work is well along in development, and all members will be provided with a beautifully hardbound copy during our centennial year in 2022. Mr. Dodson has already spent a significant amount of time here at the club interacting with our members, and he will continue to do so throughout this coming season as work on the book continues. Obviously, a number of activities are planned around our centennial, including an Antiques Roadshow event here in the late summer or early fall of this year, where members will be invited to bring their Eastwood Ho memorabilia that is too dear and personal to part with so that our publisher may capture digitized images for possible inclusion in the yearbook, or not the yearbook, the centennial book. We find that a lot of folks have a lot of really great things that they would just assume not hand over to somebody else, but they're very relevant to the club's history. This will be a fun evening, I think, for folks to come in and kind of see what type of stuff that folks have. In 2021, a little further down the road, we're going to party like it's 99. That'll be our 99th year, at an event introducing the official timeline of activities scheduled to commemorate our centennial in '22. Finally, during our big anniversary year, you can be sure that a fantastic gala celebration for the entire membership, centennial-themed golf tournaments, and much more will be featured prominently on our calendar. The Centennial Committee urges all members to become involved in this effort by checking your attics for those Eastwood Ho relics that may go back generations, by reaching out to your friends and family members who have, may have had past association with the club, and asking them to share their stories and artifacts with the committee, and finally, sharing your suggestions on how we may celebrate this occasion with any of the committee members. Many of you have been involved with other clubs or organizations that have achieved the century mark, and we would love to hear your ideas and suggestions as to how we may best mark the occasion. I'm almost done, folks. One final note, sort of a housekeeping issue, I would like to let you know that at the conclusion of this meeting, you're invited to please join us either on the terrace or North Lawn or in the grill room so that our staff may reset this room for the Welcome Back Party, which begins at 6:00. For members registered for the Welcome Back Party, we will begin passing hors d'oeuvres on the terrace in North Lawn at around 5:30, and our food stations will be set up and ready to go by 6:00. Unfortunately, I have to add that members who have dinner reservations in the grill room this evening are asked to please honor the time of your reservation, and unfortunately, due to a large number of reservations for both the grill room and the event, we will be limited in the number of walk-ins that we may be able to accommodate for dinner this evening. With that, I want to thank you all very much for your time and attention, and I would welcome any questions. Excellent. Thank you very much.
You've got brownies on the menu.
No. I'm not going to do that.
No, I'm kidding.
This is totally unfair. John escaped without a single question. It's not too late. Any questions for John? Okay. Why don't we, I'll begin going through the kind of committee-by-committee part of the meeting, and let me just comment on a few of the major board initiatives that we've undertaken so far this year. There have been, the board has been very active. We've done a lot of things, and this is just sort of a sample of some of the things that have been done. So the first thing, you've just seen our new general manager, John. We decided to reorganize the staffing of the club and have a general manager, and we felt that John, because of his expertise in management, in the management area, management skills, would be the best possible person to head that up. I've been very pleased with the results that we've seen so far. I think the club is operating a little more, the management of the club as one entity is integrated, they operate as a good team, and I hate to say that all in front of John, but John, you're doing a great job, and I want to thank you for it. The other, the next thing that has happened is that Brian has decided to, he's in the back of the room there, Brian has decided to retire and probably play a little more golf or whatever. He's shaking and said yes. And after a fair amount of work, the club came up with asking Jason Winslow to take Brian's place as head pro, and I want to welcome Jason to that position. I welcome him. I think I'm glad you did that. I think that Jason is doing a great job. One of the things that I've noticed is the attentiveness of the staff. I can hardly drive around without somebody opening my trunk, dragging out the golf clubs, even if I wasn't planning to play. You know, it's really, it's really quite easy. I wanted to mention sustainability. Sustainability is one of those areas that our long-range planning committees have recommended that the club and the board undertake. And I think it's really an interesting area. It's one that's strategically important. The idea is that all of us consume irreplaceable resources, and the question is, how do we cope with that? And so what we've been doing is putting together a sustainability committee, a group, kind of an ad hoc group, to take a look at that. Some of the elements of the effort would be, and these were identified by the long-range planning committee and adopted by a vote of the board, responsible stewardship of our land. Clearly, Eastwood Ho has a wonderful piece of land here, and the question is, how do we sustain it and preserve it for generations to come? Energy conservation is another one that impacts all of us. Waste reduction, John has already been, over the last couple of years, working on things like recycling and reducing and eliminating some of the waste that we generate. Management of materials used on the golf course, pesticides, herbicides, insecticides, fertilizers, that sort of thing. And one of the things I did want to mention was that we're looking, certainly in the beginning, for what I think of as win-win situations. Not everything that we do has to wind up costing us. Some of it actually benefits us. An example of that is a lot of the energy conservation measures that we implemented during the past several years, through changes in light bulbs, putting solar panels on the roof of the maintenance building, changing motors and things like that, some of the refrigeration equipment. John and his staff just implemented what I think is really a neat project. It turns out, the kitchen fans were consuming huge amounts of energy, and they were either all-on, full-on, or full-off. And what they did was they put in variable speed controllers that where the speed of the fan now depends on how much smoke and how much heat and so forth are detected automatically in the range hoods. These fans are saving by varying the speed. They're saving a lot of money, several thousand dollars a year. The cost of implementation was borne 50% roughly by Eastwood Ho and roughly 50% by the Cape Light Compact, which is an organization on the Cape. The noise level has gone down. Noise level used to bother people on the patio and even the ninth green, and hopefully that's improved. And the environment in the kitchen has been made better for the staff that are working there. So that's my idea of a win-win, probably, win-win-win situation, and we'll look for more of those as we go along. We have a few people that have signed up to work on this, and we could probably use a couple more. So if this is something that is of interest to you, let me know, and we'll put the right people together. Another thing I wanted to mention was committees. Again, this is a recommendation by the long-range planning committee that was adopted by the board. One has to do with term limits. It turns out that sometimes people get on committees and they stay and they're making contributions, but the long-range planning committee and the board felt that what made sense was to have some term limits, that is, a three-year limit with the possibility of renewal for another three years. The idea was to encourage people then, after that, perhaps to move on to a different committee or to do something else. So that's been adopted. Chair experience, it was decided that in order, before you want chairs of committee, they should serve on the committee for at least a certain amount of time. And then the third was member participation. Sometimes the committees get heavily participated in only by certificate members or sometimes senior members. So those are some changes that, that have been, have been implemented. I just want to mention bylaws. Some of our bylaws have become a little bit antiquated through technological changes and because of some other things. So we have a bylaw committee that Jim Pagos is heading up. I think Jim will come up with some wording revisions by the annual meeting. It's mostly in the form of a cleanup of some of the language that we have now, nothing that I know of, certainly, I don't, Jim's shaking his head, no. Nothing new and radical. What'd you say?
Nothing dramatic.
Nothing dramatic, okay. This is a cleanup. The certificate members will get copies of these before the annual meeting, and we'll vote on them. And again, this is, this is a matter of cleanup. I just added one more thing to the list, and that is strategic issues. By having a general manager and by shifting some of the day-to-day work that committees had been doing over to John and his staff, it frees up the, a lot of the committee members and a lot of the board to think a little bit more strategically and a more, and a little more longer term. And I think that's going to be very healthy for the club. One of the things that Randy will talk about a little bit is the Golf Course Master Plan, but I think that's an example of some of the things that we can do to do maybe a little bit better, longer-term, longer-term planning with this additional time. Peter Zotto has been very kind in helping to coordinate some discussions about, about strategy, about how to think of the club, about our values and so forth going forward. So that's happening. So that's about what I have to say. Any questions? Oh, come on. No questions? Okay. All right. The next is the, what? Who's, who's next?
Me.
It's you. Okay. I'll leave the pointer here.
Hi. Good afternoon, everybody. We have 19 members on our golf committee, 15 club members, and four staff that include Brian, Jason, Frank, and John. I want to thank all the committee. Done a lot of hard work over the past year. We meet once a month, and we talk about golf-related issues, events, rules, Pro Shop, and so forth. So we've been busy, and as Eric said, and really, I'm giving you an update. I know many of you, so this might be repeating some things I've already said, but an update that our plan really is to implement, make sure we have a great season this summer. But of course, our, our big news is we recommended Jason to be our head pro in, in April. I personally think he's off to a great start. There's a big focus on membership engagement, communication service, and golf interaction. Hopefully, you've witnessed it and experienced it when you drive up to the club, you'll see the podium now. That was Jason's idea. The whole idea behind that is that there will be staff there to greet you and to enable you to get a tee time regularly, and I think that's a great addition. Also, as Eric mentioned, there's a lot more interaction on the driving range than in the past, and as a matter of fact, I was down there this morning, and Andy was there with the Trackman. Unfortunately, he was sharing some bad data with me, but I enjoyed that, and I'd encourage you to take care of it. So I, I think he's off to a great start, but of course, I'm, I'm not objective on this because I've played a part in making the recommendation. I welcome your feedback. Our most important thing is we want every member to have great experience at Eastwood Hall. The other thing we worked on was our calendar. There were two issues that the golf committee heard about. One, there were a lot of events being played here that members were not participating in, and the second is that we had a very crowded September schedule. So we worked together with the greens committee and made a number of changes, and the end result was that we've been able to create more open playtime for our membership. And I think, I hope you'll all be happy with that. So it was a good work, and I didn't realize how much work goes into that scheduling back and forth, and John, John did do a wonderful job in helping lead that for us. We continue to look at practice range improvements. The yellow balls are back, high-quality balls. I think that's much better than the white ones we had last year, alignment sticks. Jack Bowman made some recommendations with a subcommittee on some target areas. We've, we've created four new target zones for short game practice. Try it. It's, it's kind of hard. I hate to say it, both Jason and I went out there and it took us an hour to hit one of them between the two. But it's, it's fun, and if you can have, you can have a lot of enjoyment in that. We also, based on some recommendation, made an improvement. Frank made an improvement to the bunker on the practice, the short game area. You might not realize it until you go over and stand in it. The face of the bunker is lower, so it's more realistic to the golf course, and it just makes for a better training experience. And then the other thing is, maybe some of you have seen, we put a protection fence in on the back end of the driving range. One of our staff was, mentioned that he was concerned about getting hit by golf balls. If you go there, a few of us went up there, a lot of balls were being fired into that area, and so we, we inserted the fence and looking for some screening options. We did get a quote back for $12,000, so we didn't think that was worth it, but we'll make that improvement, I think, in the fall. Next slide. Talked about the online regis, or the matchup, player matchup. The other, based on Jason's weekly communication, there's a link now to register directly for club events online versus last year, which you'd have to call the Pro Shop. So I think that's a good improvement. And also, this past January, the USGA made a number of rule changes to simplify the game and speed the game, and there were two, one local rule we decided as a, as a committee, and we created two no-play downs, and Brian's written about these in the, in the current. One is on the left side of 15, and then along the right side of 18. And then the final thing that I would say, last slide, is based on recommendation by the technology committee, Peter Zotto's committee, we adopted two, two, I think, improvements. One is visage. That recommendation came to the golf committee, and we approved it, and then the greens committee approved it. This, I think we're going to install the visage system in September in all golf carts. There's two modules being purchased. One is to manage where golf carts travel on the course. Surprisingly, even though we, we don't think people wander into sensitive areas, they have, so there'll be a big maintenance improvement in terms of caring for our course. And the other module will be pace of play, both if somebody falls behind, they'll get a notification in the cart or through the Pro Shop, they can track where a particular cart is. So I think in terms of pace of play, I think that's really important. We're shooting for four hours, and I think if you choose to leave the pin in the cup, you can probably get that down to 3:45. And then the, the final thing is Trackman. I'd encourage, we've had about 50 members take advantage of it. It's a great tool. Even if you don't care so much about, you know, your, your club head's speed and so forth, the two big things that you get from that is the distance your ball carries and the distance the ball will travel, and those are great things because at least for myself, I underestimate that all the time here at Eastwood Hall. So those are the, those are the updates. As I said at the beginning of my, my presentation, I just want to make sure everybody has a great season this year, and we're going to focus on implementing these things as we go forward through the course of the year. Thank you. Any questions?
As we know, in June, July, and August, the golf paths get very dusty. I'm just wondering, have the club ever considered shells?
Shells.
Granulated shells.
I hate to say this, but I think that's a question for the greens committee.
Well, are you dodging the bullet?
I am. No, I mean, Randy or do you want?
Jim, this is Randy, just to address the answer to your question. Have we considered all alternatives to those cart paths? Right now, we have, we actually have wetting agents that are in those cart paths themselves with the dust, and we're hoping that when we're fully staffed this summer, as opposed to last summer, we'll be able to do a much better job of getting sensitive areas of cart paths that pick up dust wetted. But the, I don't remember the exact reason, but shells, I think partly because of color and they bleach out so white and would just stand out, were not chosen as a potential alternative to the cart path.
Don't you think it's indigeneous?
Irrespective of being indigenous or not, the committee decided not to move forward with shells. I think what the long-term solution would be, would be to have something that blends in with the color of the native grasses and the current cart paths in a mortar-based with aggregate solution, but that's probably some years down the line.
Is that going to happen this summer?
I said some years down the line.
Peter? Thank you.
Phil, if you might just mention the survey after people take Trackman lessons to make sure they do well.
Oh, okay, yeah. There's a survey, and if, you can actually get your results mailed to you, which are great, it's interesting to look at, but as Peter mentioned, there's a survey. We want your feedback. We want to see how many people are using it, how you like it, and possibly look at expanding next year. Yes, sir.
No, I assume one of the modules for visage does include distance to the hole?
No.
Oh, no?
No, no.
Okay.
No, we decided, that was decided, no, we did not proceed.
Great.
Thank you.
I wasn't expecting to get any hard questions today because Brian Drake's not here, but you filled in sufficiently. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming today. I just have a few brief updates from the, from the green committee, but before I get into any of my remarks, I did want to let everybody know that on Sunday, June 30th, at 3:00 PM, we will be hosting an open forum on the golf course, the master plan, and golf course operations. There's a lot of, you know, changes. The new master plan will be discussed in further detail, and we have an opportunity to do so today. There have been some changes in, or coming changes in the Pro Shop, you know, as well as, you know, new maintenance practices on the golf course, and we're just hoping to provide a broader forum and a larger timeframe for people to ask about certain things that are happening on the golf course within the Pro Shop and how we all, you know, enjoy the golf course here. So I'm going to keep my remarks brief. I'm not trying to quell any, any questions today, but we're going to have a real opportunity to have a much broader timeframe and get a little bit deeper into the golf course and the master plan and the golf operations. But I would like to start with a staffing update. At our annual meeting in August, I was banging the drum about the significant problems that we were having attracting and retaining staff at the club, and unfortunately, the golf course suffered as a result of that last year. I'm pleased to announce that our staffing situation is now on solid footing. This is largely a result of both the finance committee and the Board of Governors approving a budget, allowed us to increase our payroll enough to pay more competitive wages in, as John already alluded to, a very highly competitive wage environment. In providing a higher competitive wage for candidates, we're also increasing our web presence with regards to advertising open positions. Indeed and Google have provided a younger candidate pool. LinkedIn and our Eastwood Hill website have also contributed to this improvement, and an applicant aggregator that we're now using has improved efficiency, organization, and provides us with a better understanding of our seasonal labor pool. Within the maintenance staff, we have an educationally diverse staff for the summer of 2019. The employees are taken very well to their intense training and learning opportunities. These new employees hail from Massachusetts, Connecticut, Texas, North Dakota, New York, California, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, Indiana, and the Dominican Republic. Colleges and universities represented are Texas Tech, North Dakota State, SUNY Delhi, Eton, Southern Connecticut State, Worcester Poly Tech, UC Berkeley, Lock Haven, Bridgewater City, Penn State, Providence College, UMass Dartmouth, Cornell, University of New Hampshire, and Rutgers. And these aren't all necessarily turf management candidates or turf management degree holders. It's a very diverse group of people seeking degrees of turf manag, turf management, business communications, communications, robotics, chemical engineering, criminal justice, life physics, computer engineering, and landscape architecture. So the very modest increase in our hourly wages that we're paying our seasonal work are clearly paying off, and we've attracted a group of young people that are taking the training exceedingly well, they're working very hard and doing great work on the golf course, so we should be grateful to have the golf course in the shape that it is at present, thanks for their hard work. Yeah, awesome. I'd like to move on, I'd like to skip ahead a little bit without our architect search update. When the email blast went out, within the last couple of weeks, there was reference to our working on a master plan through our new golf course architect, and there were some people that were unaware that Keith Foster was no longer involved with Eastwood Hill, so I just wanted to bring anybody who's not aware of what, you know, what was going on in Keith Foster's business life, if you will. Keith Foster and his wife operated a luxury home decor business in suburban Virginia, and he unfortunately got involved in some bad business through that business and was caught by the U.S. Customs Department for smuggling endangered animal parts into the USA for sale to his customers within that business. Keith ultimately pled guilty to these charges and was sentenced to 30 days in prison, which he has already served. At the time that this all became apparent to the club, the green committee, and the Board of Governors decided that we should cut ties with Keith, this was communicated to him ultimately by Frank Hancock. He explained that he understood armed reasoning, and he's just trying to put his life back together at this point. In late December 2018, a small committee comprised of myself, Ed Benz, Frank Hancock, and Scott Seymour began meeting and discussing the process to determine a new consulting architect. We're at this point so close to the end of our projects that started all the way back in 2004 under Keith's guidance, with one, really essentially, one iteration remaining. We're in kind of a challenging situation to find a new architect because we need to find somebody that's both a good architect but is also willing to take on sort of a project that's at the end and really come on as more of a consultant as opposed to somebody who's going to come and rework and change the golf course, because we are very, very pleased with the work that Keith did over the years and the results here at Eastwood Hill. We started out by speaking some outside counsel. Those individuals included Rand Morissette, who's an architectural historian and the founder of Golf Club Atlas. Some of you may remember Rand, as he's had several events here where he's talked about the history of Herbert Fowler. Rand himself is a member of Westwood Hill in Devon over in the UK, which is a Fowler course, and he's come here to play matches against Brad Vax and others to do events at the club over the years. We also spoke to Jeff Shackelford, who is a golf writer, a golf course architect, and an occasional host on Golf Channel's Morning Drive. And lastly, we spoke to Ron Witten, who is the architecture editor of Golf Digest Magazine. Again, just picking these people's brains because they're all familiar with Eastwood Hill, to find out who they thought might be good candidates for this position in kind of a unique role. And one of the things that did come out of this is that we decided we don't really need any marquee names like Adok or Hans or a Kuren Crenshaw. So much of the work has already been done. We really just need to polish the edges of what has happened and maybe execute just a few more projects. We also wanted to look for three general qualities, potentially younger up-and-comers, anyone who's worked with Keith Foster in the past, because we're very happy with Keith's philosophy and his knowledge of Herbert Fowler, and also restoration specialists. At this point, we're nearing the completion of our, determining initial candidates. Once we get our full stable of candidates, Frank is going to do an initial reach-out to these individuals via phone to gauge their interest in working with Eastwood Hill, and he'll then do follow-up calls to go more in-depth about their experience, their history, projects that they've worked on, et cetera. Throughout this process, both Frank and I will talk to superintendents and green committee chairs at clubs where these individuals have worked or are currently working, just to get the on-the-ground input from those individuals at the clubs. And ultimately, there may be some potential select site visits to any potential architects' prior and present work, and that's probably going to occur in late August into September. Ultimately, this will go to the green committee. We've already cycled- Ultimately, this will go to the Green Committee, we've already cycled some of the ideas through the Green Committee, and the ultimate recommendation will go to the Board of Governors from the Green Committee, we are hoping by the fourth quarter of 2019. Once this individual is hired, we would hope that they would begin to get involved by reviewing the master plan that was set out for your proposal, excuse me, set out for your review and input, and weigh in on that master plan. We'd like them to review the most recently proposed work from Keith Foster, weigh in on that proposed work, and make any additional suggestions, and then continue to consult with us on an as-needed basis on any future projects. With respect to the master plan itself, work on this began, on this version that was distributed to you via email, or linked to you via email on the club website, began back in 2017. The subcommittee that was working on this master plan included Ed Benz, Jack Bowman, Doug Hamilton, Frank Hancock, Bill Healy, Jan Hoynaki, and myself. Consulted at one or more times throughout the process, as we put this master plan together, were past presidents, past Green Committee chairs, Keith Foster, Rand Morissette, the Golf Committee, Ryan Hamilton, and the Board of Governors. The document that you've all been presented with has been unanimously approved by both the Green Committee and the Board of Governors. However, I do want to point out today that this is still in draft form, as we are seeking input and feedback from the membership. Again, I had already alluded to the fact that we're going to have a spoken forum, that will be one opportunity for you to provide feedback. Several of you have already responded to the email link on the email blast that was sent out with responses to the master plan. I thought we were going to have my email up here, but I guess, I guess we missed that, and I missed that not being on there, but we will distribute another email with my email address on it, so that if you want to direct any questions to me specifically, that I will share with the committee, if you are unable to make that forum on June 30th. Or you can speak to one of the subcommittee members that I mentioned, or anyone who's presently on the Green Committee. Once we evaluate feedback from the membership, the document will be edited and republished again and posted from the membership. And this document will remain in draft form until we ultimately hire a new architect and receive that input from whoever we hire, and will then hopefully have a final draft of the golf course master plan. Any questions? Okay, thank you, I hope to see many of you on the 30th.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Building and Grounds Committee, we have one individual that's no longer with us, but he'll be forever remembered as our meritorious member of the Building and Grounds Committee. Building and Grounds has been, has been busy this past year. The floors in the clubhouse were all refinished, if you came in here, January, February timeframe it was, walk in and immediately get a severe buzz from the urethanes that were all cut down, but the floors were great, should be in good shape for a number of years. Ongoing interior and exterior painting. One of the major projects that went on is that the dishwashing station in the kitchen was replaced. Now, this isn't a two-rack system that you have in your house, this is an entire system with high-pressure pumps and high-velocity nozzles. It was quite a project, it turned out that there was severe leaking that was taking place behind the system. So, after the old unit was pulled out, discovered a lot of rot and a lot of seepage, so it required a lot of rebuilding of the entire support area and the wall behind it for the new system to be put in place, but it's, it is all set. The unit itself was part of our regular replacement plan and was scheduled to be, to be replaced anyways, but not all the additional work that took place. Under the direction of the House Committee, and I'm sure Jane will talk about it a little bit, but the Building and Grounds, Building Committee took care of the painting and refinishing of the Tomlinson Room, which has come out great. We installed a seasonal weather shield, again, if you weren't here this winter, you never saw it, but essentially a tent enclosure over the area to enter the club offices. It reduced the wind, made it a little more comfortable for any handicapped individual accessing the building through there, and once the good weather comes, it was, it was taken down and will go back up again in the, in the fall. And then the biggest project that's gone on is last fall, the roof of the, the south deck, the back deck on the pro shop, the roof failed, the membrane failed, and we started getting leakage into the pro shop below. That required a new membrane being put down on there, it's a, it's a rubber roof that is stretched out, and while it was, it was necessary to rip up that deck that was there, which was pretty well shot anyways, to put that membrane down, we've also installed a brand-new deck there that is a few trim pieces away from being complete. It should give the pro shop some additional area to host some of the junior events, and there's been talk of putting the net back there, so who knows what, what that space can be used for. That's it for Building and Grounds, any questions on Building and Grounds? Great. Oh, one other thing, it, the, you've probably seen the new edge along the driveway next to the putting green, and the walkway there. The walkway is a kind of a mix of safety effort as well, so that people can walk along there and not get picked off by cars as they're, they're coming on the driveway. One other item that I'd like to just quickly review is the, the facilities master planning that has been going on. At this time, that, that project is shelved. There seems to be little or no support from any quarter to spend any money on anything, so we're simply going to shelve it. We've got a great plan, should the club ever want to move forward with something, we can, we can resurrect it easily enough and move forward, but for the time being, we're, we're going to sit tight. Any questions?
Good afternoon, everyone. Soon we'll be having cocktails, so we'll be moving right along.
Use the microphone, please.
The goal of the House Committee above all else is to help our members have the best dining and social experiences throughout the season. Therefore, with guidance from John, the House Committee is responsible for setting the events calendar for the year, as well as helping to promote and host events. Of course, it's John and his food and beverage team who actually make things happen. I hope you have all had an opportunity to meet our team. Chef Mark, Alita Capirelli, who's our food and beverage manager, Jamie Shepherd, our restaurant manager, Rashawn Faulkner, dining services captain, and Chloe Tomaso, who is a jack-of-all-trades, who is also our events and communications assistant, she's here helping us today. Together, they are here to make your dining experience, your dining and event experiences memorable and seamless. Here are the faces of some of the 34 seasonal staff members who have been coming on board for the last few weeks. This year, they come to us from, from five countries as well as New England. Their name tags show which countries they are from, so you have an opportunity to chat with them about where they're from and learn more about them this summer. We are also indebted to our core staff for their many years of service. Kathy and Ed, Tina, Kathy and Kristen from the front of the house, and from the back of the house, Brian, Manny, Darrell, Patrick, Alfred, and Jones. Staff we don't normally see because they are very busy preparing approximately 37,000 covers a year. And they are waiting in the wings to perform their magic as soon as we exit this room by 5:30. This year, we have many of our very popular events on the calendar. For example, Kids Night Out, our Saturday Summer Coolers, the Harvest Dinner in the Fall, and as well as return visit from the Flying Ivories for doing pianos on July 12th. I'd also like to put in a plug for our upstairs of the club piano bar. Jim Blankenship, who was a member of the House Committee in the past year or so, was the inspiration for this event. So, come on June 29th and sing a song in memory of Jim. His vision was it was going to be like the Old Christians, so he's still working on it, so I need your help, all your voices, whether they're good or bad. Two new events this month are the Murder Mystery Dinner Theater, where rumor has it, there will be a murder that takes place on Hall 19. We didn't know there was a Hall 19 there, you'll find out. And the Wine and Cheese Pairing and Tasting Event with Adam Santamori, who is a Boston wine educator. Also hope you've had an opportunity to visit the newly redecorated Tomlinson Room with its lighter look, thanks to Mary Ellen Bowers, Suzanne Hamilton, and Patty Hopple, who volunteered to undertake this project, with the countless hours they have spent since last fall to make the space one that I hope members will look forward to spending time in. And finally, back to the House Committee's goal of providing ongoing outstanding dining and social experiences. I encourage you to complete the comment cards when you dine with us, provide suggestions in the suggestion box, and complete the surveys that John sends out following many of our events. This is important feedback to help us achieve our goal. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'll be very brief, first of all, I want to thank my committee members for the work that they've done, we've done great amount of interviews this, this year, and we have given you some figures here as to where we, where we stand. I can tell you that when we get done with our interview process in the next couple of weeks, we'll have approximately 11 people on the legacy list, 43, 45 people on the non-legacy certificate list, and 88 on the house list. It, just as a reminder, the lists really are all closed with the exception of junior legacy. Also, to give you an idea that we've seen some change in how people are accepting these, we actually gave 29 invitations for memberships this year so far, and only 11 have actually been accepted. So, that has a lot to do with the age of the people that are on the list, and really the process that we're going through right now is getting a little bit more realistic listen. If you have any questions about where any of your potential applicants might stand, please feel free to call me. Thank you.
So, first, maybe you can get the pointer. All right.
So, I want to thank the Finance Committee for all the help they've done, but we're keeping it a secret, so I don't have a slide with their names. But if you talk to me privately, I'll work it out. What I want to do is two things. One is talk about 2018 and then talk about 2019 quickly. I've used this slide a couple times in the past. This is...
Can you hear me if I carry your mic? Can you hear me? I can hear you.
This is our expense. This is what we spend cash-wise, and that's the depreciation, it's everything wearing out. The way we set our revenue objectives is we want to have higher revenue than the cash we spend, so that we're cash flow positive, but we don't break even in terms of the overall depreciation cost. So, that's how we've run the, the club forever, and that's how many clubs run it, so that we could charge more and cover book, but it's not necessary in a club where you have the opportunity of raise funds the other way, other ways. So, if you look at how we did in 2018, this was our objective of, excuse me, this was our operating loss objective, almost $900,000 loss, and that was our objective 877, and 562 in terms of cash. If you look at how we did, revenues were 6.9 million, roughly 500,000 higher than, than we had planned. So, that's pretty good.
Everybody?
Terrific. The big, the big question is how much higher were expenses? And they were 200 higher. So, in fact, we generated 300,000 extra cash because of the plan and how we managed the club last year. And so, that cash, 877, goes into the reserves, goes into all of the things that we want to do in the golf, in the clubhouse, and in the greens. So, if we look at next year, our expenses are slightly higher than last, because we're going to, we have payroll costs that are higher, and in fact, in the greens, a good portion of that increases in the greens, as Randy talked about it. In terms of the revenue, we're still shooting a target of operating, operating profit about 570, and a book law, a book loss of 900,000, just about what we did last year. And if you look over time, you can see that our costs have grown, this is a 10-year look, and principally, the driver of those costs, year over year, have been payroll and healthcare and employee-related costs. It's 60%, 65% of our cost is payroll. And so, our revenues have increased accordingly, right here, and you can look at the dues increases that were required, and you can see that this year, we raised to 3.5%, and it was driven largely by the fact that our payroll costs are higher, and we wanted to support the greens. So, if you compare those over the years to clubs you belong to, or clubs your friends belong to, we're, we're pretty competitive, very favorable in terms of the raises that we've experienced. When we look at our capital plan for next year, our sources of capital are initiation fees, you saw that number earlier. We have assessments, there's a little left in the clubhouse, we still have the shoreline assessment, we'll have the operating results that I talked about before, and if you look at the total sources of revenue for capital, it's almost $2 million for, for next year. If you look at the expenses, the majority of that, 300,000, is paying down our debt. We talked about the golf course, where we're, we're putting in new carts, we changed a couple, a whole or two. The pro shop has a deck, the shoreline is continuing to require additional funds, that's the, that's the shoreline in right in here. The clubhouse, we have a new deck, we have a new dishwasher, and other equipment that are being used by John, and then in the clubhouse, we have some new kitchen equipment as well. So, roughly speaking, the capital coming in and the capital going out are about the same for next year. Lastly, how much debt do we have? That's a question I'm asked frequently. This is a average view of the debt, because we have a mechanism where we have a credit facility, and so we borrow from it and then pay it back, so that we can keep, like you have a credit card, you have the potential to use it, so we keep it healthy. Roughly, the actual normalized debt is probably between 1.5 and 1.8. So, we were about 4 million in debt two or three years ago, and now we're less than 2 million in debt, because we've been paying that off. So, very sound financials, and I think the experience is improving as well. So, thank you. Jim didn't ask for any questions, but I will. Does anybody have any questions for Jim? Okay, well, this is the, the end of the, of the session, almost. Well, I'd like to, first of all, thank all of the presenters for the effort and intelligent effort and energy that they put into coming here today and communicating.
Jim didn't ask for any questions, but I will. Does anybody have any questions for Jim? Okay. Well, this is the end of the session, almost. I'd like to, first of all, thank all of the presenters for the effort and intelligent effort and energy that they put into coming here today and communicating. I think, as I mentioned in the beginning, communication is what this is all about, and it's meant to go multiple ways, between the members and the board leadership and the staff leadership. And it's not meant to end right now, but it's meant to continue. And so I put up a couple of indications of how to continue. Of course, conversation is always good, but also there's a comments and suggestion page on the website, and then there's always email. You can send an email to boardofgovernors@eastwoodhoe.net, and it will get to the right people. So that kind of wraps it up. I'm hoping we... Maybe some of you have been generating questions as some of these talks have been going on. And I'd like to open the floor for discussions for additional questions. Yes?
Eric, there was a bunch of different committees that talked, and I'm not sure which one applies to, who my question applies to, but the last year on the 11th hole, when we were looking at that house there, I know, I didn't think it was presented the right ways, no criticism of anyone, but has there been any talk about just going back again, buying it, tearing down the barn, widening it out, and just minimizing the loss and getting rid of the rest of the remaining... Selling off the remaining lot or whatever? Because I've been a member here for 45 years. I remember when they built the first house on two to the right of the fairway. And it was a problem then, it's more of a problem now. I know we've kind of addressed it, but I see that, I see that we have a chance to look it over again, don't go into the hospitality business or anything like that, but the 11th hole, there's no need to address it, but I just wanted, you know, master planning, maybe someone... I was wondering if anyone's still looking at that, or is it just like a third rail and no one wants to touch it? Which I understand...
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks for the input, Terry. So the answer is not really. After we gave up on the acquisition, it, I think people were pretty much discouraged about it, and we haven't pursued it. There's nothing to say that we couldn't reopen and revisit it, but so far, nothing's really sort of been done. Any other comments or questions?
Eric, if I can build on Terry's suggestion... Thank you, John. If I can build on Terry's suggestion of, as you focus more on strategic issues, which the board is going to do, the land that we get to occupy is very valuable, okay, and very limited for lots of reasons. We're doing a lot on the shoreline to protect it. That other side of the land probably needs to be focused on as well, from a strategic standpoint. And so I would suggest maybe as one of your strategic issues, as you look out, you may want to build that in and think about what we can do over the next 50 or 100 years to protect ourselves and give us a little more options with what we could do. We always talk about the practice range isn't good enough, you know, but we're constrained. I'm not saying that's the solution, but I've never seen land not being a good deal for us, you know? And I think one of the best decisions you ever made was back when we bought that house on 13. And so I would ask you to maybe put that in your strategic quiver and look at maybe something we can do on the land process.
Well, thank you for the input. There's two inputs about the land issue, and I think it's fair to say we can revisit that and we'll take it up again.
I just want to be a third voice in that regard because, you know, we are sea locked and land locked. And I grew up here, and when I was first on this golf course, eight years old, we owned all of the point. And so I also have watched the land built up around us. And I'm very concerned about 20 years from now. You know, we really have to, I think, address this strategically, and I hope we do.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's quite a bit of support for that concept, and I think it's fair to say that we will. We'll take it up at a board meeting and have some discussion about it. Okay. Good. Other questions or comments? Trent?
I'd like to address something that we've all become, including myself, very comfortable with and enjoy very much. Nevertheless, I think it's something we need to reconsider, and that is our distribution of water in plastic bottles. Again, it's extremely convenient. I've grown to just depend upon it, but with all we've read in recent year or two about the pollution of our oceans with plastic waste, for us to just consume so much plastic for our own convenience, I think is a mistake. I think it'd be the right thing to do is to stop that.
Yeah. Thank you for that input, Jen. So I share your view, and I share concern as well. And that's one reason that we have the Sustainability Committee that is now being formed. And plastic is certainly, the use of plastic, the disposal of plastic, and other things are all, all need to be addressed. And I see it really as a strategic issue too, and I think you were kind of alluding to it, in that there is a lot going on in towns at the state, national level, where people are expressing concern about the use of plastics, but also about the consumption of water, things like that. You can drive around Chatham and already you see signs that say, you know, voluntary water bans are in effect. It won't be too long before somebody looks at our golf course and all the sprinklers going on and say, "Holy moly, you know, these guys are using..." Phillip is advising me not to talk about this, but it's pretty evident. So, yeah, I think these things all need to be addressed. I think they are long-term issues that will affect us not just in the next couple of years, but in decades to come. And so I'm very pleased that we are starting to undertake that. And as I mentioned earlier, people that want to work in that area, please let me know, and we're putting together a team as we speak. So other questions? Comments? George? Is that George back there? Yes, George.
Perhaps more at the request of my wife, I'd like to bring out the safety issue with the cots going up and down Fox Hill Road. These cots are a safety issue. Those of us that live in the lower part of Fox Hill can attest to the many times that we've almost hit these cots. So I have two thoughts, the cots, and then the other thought that I have is from the environmental issue, I'd like to see the possibility of having the cots be changed, the new cots being purchased, look into electric cots and electric items that we use to maintain the golf course. I really think it would increase the enjoyment of the course for those people that are playing there. Thank you.
Okay. So that's, those are really two good points, George. Thanks for making them. One having to do with driving the cots on Fox Hill Road. I don't think that's allowed, actually, but I know everybody does it. I've done it. Sometimes it's a convenient way to get back. These cots are not licensed for driving on the road, so actually, you're not supposed to do it. The other thing that George was talking about was some of the machinery that's used to maintain the golf course that's powered by internal combustion engines, and they're a lot noisier than certainly the electric cots that we have. And one of the things that George has pointed out to me is the wonderful aspect of getting out on the golf course, the peace and quiet and tranquility, and the machinery can kind of interfere with that. So looking into that in terms of electric equipment, electrically powered equipment is a great idea, and hopefully, the Green Committee can take that up.
Just visage will prevent carts from being driven on the road.
Okay. I don't know if everybody heard that. Phillip was saying... You want to, Phillip, you want to say that again?
Visage, which will be deployed in September, so the summer, we have to prevent that, but visage won't allow carts to go on Fox Hill's road.
Well, that also applies to the Greens Committee people, because those are the cots, and I drive down there too. Those are the ones we almost always run into, the maintenance cruise carts.
Right. Hopefully, you don't actually run into them, but I know what you mean. So again, maybe the Greens Committee can be cognizant of that and walk into it.
You can look at putting visage on the Greens Committee cart, theoretically.
On the, yeah.
Program, so they don't go out.
Okay. Good idea. Other questions? Jen?
Just one additional comment to it, that my experience, and I live down there too, my experience, and I live down there too, is that the staff is really pretty mindful of car vehicular traffic, and they're always looking behind and they move to the side, almost always. It would be, I think, very difficult for them not to use the road to get to the front line of the, some locations on the front line. So it's a balance there.
It's a balance, right. Thank you. Yes?
I talk really loud. The visage or visage or whatever, if we're going to go to the trouble of doing it, is it a cost issue to add a module that has the distance to the green and/or in the blind bellies to see where the next cart is? Would we be able to... Is there a reason that we're not doing the distance to the greens?
We discussed that module, and the committee at this point decided that we did not want to deploy that. I think there's an option, though, if the membership decides it's valuable and it's of value to everybody, that's something we can look at as an addition.
And can you see where the cart in front of you is on the thing?
Yes.
Is that, have we added that ability?
That comes with current.
Okay.
That feature is included in one of the modules.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the thing we looked at was a lot of range of options, a lot of options we could have considered. I think the thing, the thought process, there are ways to improve the quality of the maintenance and to improve the productivity of the Greens staff, as well as the safety issues associated with carts. So that was our focus to start. And as we get more experience, we may look at different options. So we have that option to go forward, but I think that was the focus. And I think that makes the most sense for the club today. We may think about something different tomorrow.
Thank you, Peter. I don't know if everybody knows, but Peter recently headed up a technology committee, and he worked with the managers in the club, with Frank and Brian and John, to decide, to investigate what kind of technology was out there, what kind of technology we should adapt. And they wrote a really nice report. The report is on the website, and I would encourage anybody that's interested in this area to just go to the website and take hold of the report. It's a great report. Other questions? Okay. I don't see any more hands. Well, thank you all for coming on this beautiful day. Thank you. [applause]